I get in job.
I'll start again. Yes, we're continuing to experience and as recently as last week multiple times. The T one failure which affects the click at that public safety radio site. And at some points our phone service or the admin lines into the Department of Emergency Management also went down along with that. So we're continuing to work on that and find resolution, but I am. Happy that we have local contacts reestablished from the tech side and they're communicating directly with me. For solutions and they have now moved all of our circuits off of. The older equipment and onto new equipment that they can now monitor remotely. And see what's going on. So at the point that I call them and tell them that our alarm has gone off for the radio system. Then they can see if they haven't already got a push notification from their new equipment and work from it. From where they are, they don't have to respond to our building or to wow office here in Golden Dale. So that's a great step forward. However, we're still trying to. Find an alternate service for that radio site in form of a microwave link or some other. And if you'd like more details on that, just let me know and we can have, because there's a lot that has gone on to this project to replace that T one. The rest is ongoing activities, the. Tier one annual preventative maintenance work and report hasn't been finalized yet because we've had them doing other things or system. Of a priority nature, however, that preliminary verbal report is telling me that. There's anywhere from two to five sites are still working to refine the testing that they've done. Two to five sites that have issues with our receive antennas and. This could be anything up into a bad antenna that you know, they've been out there for anywhere from fifteen to twenty years, depending on the site. Or what we've experienced more often in the past is that the connectors. On the tower, their barrel connectors for the coax mid tower, they move around, they wear out. They were not of a public safety grade connector when they were installed in the original project and they have failed at multiple sites in the past. But my reason for bringing that up is because the the maintenance budget for this sort of thing is of topic for next year's budget. And we have about half of what we annually use for next year. So if I can't get these things fixed this year with the budget that we have remaining. We will be dipping into that soon because it's it's not acceptable to have receive antennas that aren't. Operating and receiving field traffic at the full power. So as that becomes more clear and we decide what the actual failure is and what it needs to. What's going to take to correct it, I will keep you apprised. Moving along. Radio site lease agreements under Juniper Point with Blue Mountain. Still working with Blue Mountain and we've made progress recently in the last three weeks, they have agreed. To provide internet service to most of our sites. There are some of the sites that are going to be technically, logistically. Complicated, but they've agreed in practice that they can provide internet to those sites. So. At the sites, we don't currently have internet to provide our security camera feeds. That's where they're going to partner with us. So that's encouraging and I'm hoping to get that sub lease agreement finalized with that language. Included for Juniper site and Blue Mountain by the end of this year. The other really encouraging thing about our radio sites is the wildfire fuels reductions projects I've been trying to push with D N R. At the two sites that we leased land from the D N R, I got a call from a local D N R. Representative talking about Diamond Gap and Flat Top specifically, but more so Diamond Gap and asking me. Exactly what we thought needed to be done there. So that was a good reach. Or contact and and I've also followed up with the Hillary France head of D N R. On that and other issues that resulted from our meeting a few weeks back and. So things are starting to move in the right directions for those. Mitigations of wildfire at those sites. I guess those sites would be extremely vulnerable and I think the right people understand that now. And it should trickle down. The radio system site security camera project is gone through all the county approval processes and the agreement is in place. They are currently, we're going to have a project kickoff meeting. Later this week and then start that work on October 21st. So that means that it should be able to be completed by the end of the year and have those security cameras in place. Now the internet feeds might take a little bit longer based on Blue Mountain's ability to get us internet at those sites. But most of them. Will have internet at the time that they're installed. Any questions about public safety radio system? Nine one one and dispatch. We still have three full-time positions open, one person in training and doing well. We have interviews of new people that we're going to be scheduling for next Tuesday and Wednesday. We have received. Fair number of applicants, none of which. Rise to a level of having any qualifications for this particular position or laterals or anything of that nature, but some that. Have the indicators for candidates and so we're going to start scheduling those interviews for next week. Other usual stuff that that you can read. About our staffing and public education on the operations side. The first bullet there about EMS protocols and working with the program, the county's medical program director, Dr. Smith. That's a accumulation of a couple of years of work. On our on Phil's part and my part and the folks at the EMS district and fire EMS folks. To get new protocols approved for dispatch to give the the nine one caller. Sometimes the patient, sometimes someone else, but give them those pre-arrival instructions. And that our emergency medical dispatching system. You know dictates, but they also have to be approved by the county's medical program director before we can actually implement it. And there were some changes there. So now everything's lined up and he's agreed and. That is, I'm happy to see that project come to fruition. And we can actually give pre-arrival instructions that have more up-to-date information before the first medical. Provider gets on scene, which you know, can take some time in our rural counties. So those pre-arrival instructions can be important. And you know about the G I S updates that are needed for our CAD system for our nine one mapping. The meeting that we did have with Public Works and I T was good. And we're going to continue that collaboration so that we can determine what the true need is not only for the nine one map, but. All G I S mapping in the county and what that looks like for everybody and how we can. Work together to provide that for all the users. A public safety map. Public Works map and then other users, the auditor, the assessor, public health, potentially all those things. So that was a very productive meeting from my perspective. The Spillman Local Users Group met again for the third time in recent history. We now have participation from all three law enforcement agencies, which is vital because they're the ones that use this, these functions out of. Spillman and. That way we can work together to make this system work the best it can for everybody involved and the folks that we serve. And Binge and White Salmon P D has moved forward. They purchased the Spillman mobile. Module and. Phil dedicated about two and a half days to setting that up for them so they could roll it out. They had. Several hours of training last week for all their officers and Phil helped facilitate that. So that is going to give them a whole lot more functionality for their officers in the field with their M D Ts. So we're happy to see an agency be able to number one afford that and then take the commitment. To do it and put it into full effect. Chief Eppner is and some of his officers are very excited about that and. Happy to have that ability. Oh, training, you can see there as well. I also got the opportunity to go to. The criminal justice access training with our new trainee in the Tri-Cities. Last week and that was good. We had four hours drive time to talk and so it was not only required training for her and I. But that she did well and we got to talk about things and she's. A very competent person and I have great expectations. So. Looking forward to her getting through her last few months of training and on a console as a full partner. Any questions about nine one dispatch? Emergency management programs. We've been requested by the, and I'll just hit the highlights. Knowing that you read these beforehand, if you have any questions, just jump in if I skip over something. But under the safety committee, we've been requested to give another presentation to the safety committee about active threats. And continuing down that process. To see what the county wants to adopt in the way of response protocols and so on. The January winter storm public assistance grant through FEMA is continuing. You can read all of the projects from all the various agencies, both county, city and the hospital. Skyline that is under emergency management, the four projects that we have are moving forward with all expectations from FEMA that they will be approved and we will get. Seventy-five percent of our costs that we've already expended in that emergency response. To failures and the repairs that resulted. So I'm happy about that because sometimes I think as Public Works has reported, some of the things that they submitted for were not allowable. Training and exercises, I'll point out that the U A V or U A S team. Drones, common terminology, took the advantage of training last Saturday. At the request of the City of White Salmon, they have a grant application for their watershed and water system improvements. And they were asking about images of that watershed and facilities on their watershed. So we last minute were able to incorporate our monthly training into getting those images for them. So our team went over there, conducted their training in White Salmon. And then created those images for them to add to their application. So hopefully that'll be beneficial for that purpose. Besides all the under wildfire season, besides all the prescribed burning that's gone on in the last month and a half or so, I've had quite a bit. I think it brought it to your attention before. We had two or three prescribed burns east of the Clickatatt River where we never had on the plateau here in the Golden Dale area. Those both were conducted without incident, thankfully. And we worked really hard to try and get the word out to the public so that they weren't concerned when they started seeing that smoke and. It was successful and our matrix for that is the number of nine one calls we received and the people's. Questions or concerns when they did call in and we told them it was prescribed burn. The the message is getting out there and.
I think your road signs work really well. Because when you see it on the horizon and you're driving.
Yes.
Worked for me.
Yes, and that's like I said, something we collaborated years ago with those folks that are doing the prescribed burn and not only put things out on social media and media releases, but. Put those road signs out because especially in our area on ninety-seven, but just like eighty-four on the west end of the county. Those folks are traveling through and have no idea. They don't listen or or see any of our media of any kind locally. However, right now we are working to. Consider when rescinding the burn ban, the county burn ban for all three zones. At this time, I'm getting mixed recommendations from the fire chiefs. Because there and and the the activities of the last five days. There was also a wildfire that was started by vehicle fire north of Pickleton. That was Saturday. So it started as a vehicle fire on a county road and then turned into a got into the wildlands. It didn't do much, but it's still potential. And the thing that we have to consider in rescinding the burn ban is it's not just about your. Your campfire or your fire pit in your backyard, that would then allow people to. Burn their debris piles, you know, ten by ten foot. And if people don't understand the hazards of that even in this fall time. That could create issues that that would start wildfires into the current conditions. Now. The weather that we're spend forecast for later today throughout the weekend is still just a forecast. And so I'm waiting to see what actually comes from that. But my anticipation is because this this burn ban is poised to go longer than we've ever had one. We've never carried a burn ban farther than November first. But for Central and East County, that might be a reality depending on what we get.
So dry.
Seeing no rain here until the twenty eighth.
Yeah, no, it's crazy.
The forecast keeps changing. Yes, I know that. And and as of last Friday, that forecast had like an inch and a half of rain in White Salmon and a half an inch here in Golden Dale. And then they keep changing that. So I think what will happen is that. Instead of being able to submit a resolution to the board's agenda on a Wednesday morning. For the following Tuesday to rescind the burn ban. When the conditions on the ground, because that's what we've worked so hard to do with our new burn ban code. And before with the zones across the county, we are very much. Doing our due diligence to institute and release those when the conditions on the ground dictated. Not by some arbitrary date on the calendar like used to be done or any other thing or even. You know, public pressure, that's. We've gotten a lot of that because people that don't know any better from my perspective. Have already been calling into emergency management and into dispatch and and asking to burn debris piles. So I will probably bring you a resolution as an add-on on Tuesday. And so and it would be because rescinding a burn ban isn't the same as instituting one that lead up at the. The week or two that we try to give people as a warning, it it doesn't apply when you rescind it. So it could be to rescind that burn ban the next day, just based on the conditions. Once we get enough rain and humidity and all those things.
I've got no problem with adding it on a Tuesday and rather than going through the full thing because it's allowing people to do something. It's not that big of a deal.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that that's my plan. Any other questions under the emergency management programs? Got all the grants listed and where we are with all those.
Let me good report.
Yeah, on the budget side, we are realizing another forty thousand dollars plus or minus in that grant that we secured for the G I S mapping. And lastly. Employee of the month for October for the Department of Emergency Management is Administrative Assistant Debbie Stover. So congratulations to her. If you haven't seen that on Facebook, it came with a lot of good compliments from her teammates. About who she is and what she does and how much we appreciate her. So please take a look at that. That was posted a couple of weeks back. And also we recognized recently three years of service to Lead Communications Officer Jessica Stelter. So congratulations to her. Anything else?
We're good. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to? See, we've got the potable water issue. And we don't have Mr. Van Cleve till eleven fifteen, so we'll have. Twenty minutes for potable water. Is that long enough for you?
I'll give you a second to read through the documents that I packed up.
I looked at mine.
Was this any of these sent to?
Were any of these documents sent to environmental health?
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Not as of today. I don't know if he has them already. They've been working with the individual. And I guess for me. My major concern is. The cost, just like. I brought up when we were talking about it the whole way through is I was worried. That because there's. Differences of opinion. And reluctance, it seemed from public health to do the cisterns. That I was afraid that they would. Make it completely cost prohibited. In eighteen thousand dollars just for the engineering, not for parts or labor. Just for the engineer. The guy already has the twenty-five hundred gallon cistern and he already bought a thirteen hundred dollar water purification that public health told him he was going to need. But this is just. According to the individual who would like to come testify before the board, but I told him I would bring it to you guys first and see where you wanted to go. Said that. The engineer was working with public health, back and forth with Avery. And he was following what Avery told him was the minimum. But again, you can read on here, it says you need. A letter from a water source. Which we also allowed your neighbor to be that, but this doesn't state that this. Says you gotta, you know, have an agreement with the city kind of scenario. We're leaving things out. We're making it very hard for people. And at this point, I have no. Thoughts that that's ever going to change without this board actually putting it in writing of what we expect and what the rule is. Period by the letter of the law so that. Our own employees can't weaponize. Cistern use and and give you an eighteen thousand dollar engineer estimate when that's not even any labor to parts. It's absolutely insane and I think this board owes it to the public to get to the bottom of this, however they want to do that. I also side note, I don't know, did you guys get the emails from? On the other public water Avery. Issue now.
What are you talking about?
I had a phone call if we're talking the same one. Yes, I had a phone call, two phone calls about that.
I will forward that on then I guess to Mr. Hurley.
I okay, I did get a phone call from him.
So they also have concerns. I haven't looked into that. But they they would like to do a presentation and they have the same. Concerns with the same individual.
So. I I would, if we want to talk about the Hurley thing, when the phone call I got was as they were talking about fifteen or twenty homes or something like that. Which of course you can't do without a water right and that goes through Department of Ecology. Our staff knows what they're talking about when it comes to that and that's what I tried to explain to Mr. Hurley is that comes down to water right issues.
Yeah, I didn't, I have not looked into that one much at all.
But there was.
That is far more in depth than this one. I'm just saying it's kind of.
There's also septic involved in that one that was a problem.
There's, that's a whole nother baby.
And that's a whole nother baby.
This one should be fairly, I guess that was my worry when we did the trucked water that. I mean, it took two years of pushback and pushback and obstacle and obstacle to get it through. And my biggest worry was that that it was going to be used as a weapon. To financially make it not cost effective.
And for for me, it it was a process and I came in at at the end with you guys, but it was a process like. We've always tried to do at Clickatatt County and be landowner friendly and find a way to help people that had a problem. I I think we do need to have a serious conversation. With environmental health about the. Policies in the direction of this county, still wanting to be one of those counties that's landowner friendly. And it seems like we're, at least I am continually bumping up the same issues. I was shocked at this water one. This is not what I had in my mind that it would be.
It's not what I had in my mind that it should be, but it is absolutely what I had in my mind that it would turn out to be and that's what I was afraid of.
And that's too bad.
And it and it is too bad because technically for the man to get a permit. He should have to have a cistern, purification, a pipe leaving to the house and one faucet inside the house. That's it. That's a minimum requirement. And and then a a testing once it's put in place, a one-time test. So that's.
Well, and we never had discussions about what these fees would be set at. We were never involved or.
None of these fees are on us. These are what. Environmental health is telling the engineer must be done in order to get the permit. But so this is just engineer fees.
Yeah, and I'm concerned about that process because it seems like every other process that set fees, building department, planning department, we've been involved with and approved. What those costs would be.
Well, we set the requirements for the engineering and then it's up to them to get the engineering. And I don't know if maybe environmental health is telling the engineer they need more. Then what we've said is a minimum. So they're, you know, the engineer's estimate is for the Taj Mahal of Taj Mahal because they're working with public health and public health told them that's what they need. I don't know. But I think we need to figure out and get to the bottom of why there's an eighteen thousand dollar engineer estimate to hook up. And this ain't even the hookup. This is just to draw a blueprint of a PVC pipe. From a cistern to a water purifier to a house, eighteen thousand dollars.
I've got a problem with the way this conversation is going when a commissioner is saying that staff is weaponizing a program. I think the appropriate thing that you should always do is first off, have a conversation with the staff before making accusations and statements like that. You should have done some research and got to the bottom of it with staff. I don't know if staff is online. Is Mr. Kavanaugh or Morgan online?
Well, my my discussion today was to not necessarily get to the bottom of this today. I don't believe in. I believe this is a public discussion. I don't believe this is a discussion for me to go have behind closed doors to try to facilitate an individual's permit. I think we need to get to the bottom of this in this chamber and with that, I don't know that I would. Put environmental health on the spot today. I'm asking for this to be forwarded to them, for them to come in next week, be on the agenda, tell us what's going on. And we may need to reexamine our trucked water policy. Because we set this up for people to be able to have some water to their cabin and and, you know, in Glenwood, if the tribe shuts down well usage or whatever in this. This is not the direction in any way that I hoped it would go, but it is the direction I feared it would go.
But you understand where I'm coming from, that I'm saying that you absolutely put them on the spot and with the comments saying that it's being weaponized. What I'm reading here, and I don't know if this is a text message from Avery or David, is is that you have to have a water available availability verification. So if we go to the next page, it shows you can have a cistern sift system serving one residence. You can also be served by a shared well. You can also be served by a shared well. So uh, I don't see the issue that you brought up earlier because it's clearly in our policy and the determination, the water supply determination for adequate water supply. If you're getting it from a shared well, you just click that. And then it says here, it is a cistern design contract with an approved water hauler uh, and water testing. To me, uh, you can draw your own plan. Um, and I believe that that's the case unless it is something uh, very complex in which, you know, we're not gonna have our people drawing plans. And so they can ask for the design to be drawn by an engineer if it's necessary. Um, if it's simple, you don't. What I see here is a proposal and scope from Bell Design to do everything um, from, you know, existing condition survey for six thousand dollars. There's nothing that says we after, we, we've required an existing condition survey. I don't see most of this. Um, you can write your own operations and maintenance manual for three thousand dollars. It doesn't have to be that. And you also attach here an email from May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty, which was before we even had our policies in place. So what was written here, if that's what the person is going off of, uh, that's not what we have in place and what we've agreed to. So I think if anything, uh, the rhetoric needs to be calmed down and tamped down. And we need to have a conversation or a little bit of, uh, somebody needs to do some due diligence without making accusations about staff.
The um, the twenty twenty letter is to show you how long the person has been trying to get this done. Um, again, they have more information according, I, I hate to hearsay uh, from them, but according to them, this is what the engineer was told from the discussions with environmental health needed to be done for them to get a permit. Um, that's my concern. If that is what actually happened, uh, I think we should hear from the individual. Uh, we should hear from uh, environmental health and get to the bottom of the situation. Um, and if that means changing our wordage, um, then we should do so.
I have a suggestion. So for me, um, it's been ongoing and it's multiple situations that I have questions on. This is kind of the uh, top of the list for me, for another one to add to the list. And so I would suggest we ask uh, Mr. Kavanaugh and potentially Avery to come with him uh, to set up a workshop, to start working through some of the issues. And if we need to change some policies or clarify some things, um, I would like to sit down at a table and have those conversations with the board.
And, and that's what I'm looking for. Hopefully it isn't, you know, we have budget workshops on Thursday. We have all afternoon on Tuesday for workshop. Um, we have our business meeting in the morning where we pay our bills. Uh, we have all afternoon for workshop. I'm fine with doing a Tuesday afternoon workshop. Uh, I would, I would like for the individual, which I guarantee you, I know he will be in the room um, listening, uh, but I think we need to hear from both sides, what's going on. So that we can actually get to the bottom of it and or clear up any confusion that may be going on.
Well, I would say probably the best thing to move forward is uh, for you, the commissioner who's been dealing with this to uh, contact the director, uh, Director Quinn and try to schedule a Tuesday afternoon conversation. Um, and please bring facts.
Staff can range, reach out.
Yeah, I would just have staff reach out and set up a Tuesday afternoon. Uh, are you okay with uh, extending an invitation to the individual? Um, or just, I mean, I'll, I'll tell him when we're having it, but I don't know if you wanna allow him any time to uh, speak to his concern, or should he just be calling in and uh, citizen comment, which is what is initial um, point was going to be. And I told him to just wait until I had a conversation with the board.
I would uh, say it's a public meeting, so he can always come. And if someone chooses to call on him, then somebody can call and ask a question. Uh, but this is a technically a discussion of the board.
But I think it's, it's a, a workshop, so I do want to hear from people and their issues. Maybe we can resolve them quicker than that. I'd, I'd rather have an open forum so that we can, cause there may be more than one.
Okay, so let's do that. And if you can notify me when they have that data, I will reach out and tell this individual. Um, I would, I would even love to uh, be able to reach out to the engineering firm to invite them in uh, to be part of it. So we can get to the bottom of what the bottom is, but it wouldn't be up to them if they wanted to show, obviously, but.
Well, and uh, maybe our first conversations might be more productive. Uh, because like Jake said, maybe this is just a case of uh, a misinterpretation of how high, how deep, how wide we had to go. Maybe that hand-drawn thing would have done it. I don't know why this person was required to or got shifted to an engineering firm for eighteen thousand dollars. I'd like to see a.
Fine with one step at a time. That's fine.
Thank you.
I appreciate the movement.
For confirmation purposes, um, we'll get it, it, Director Quinn, trying on Tuesday afternoon.
Uh, Director Quinn to bring environmental health, preferably Mr. Kavanaugh and Avery, since she was the one allegedly handling this case.
Good.
You get to me in the back saying no.
No. Do you have advice?
Thank you, Director Quinn, and environmental health manager.
Yes.
I think it's fair to put an employee on the spot in that kind of meeting.
Yeah.
The two levels of management are both have been way in.
I appreciate that. Okay, that's good. I'm good. I'm good with Avery and, yeah, or with uh, David and. Yeah. Set that subject. Set done? Oh, Mr. Van Cleve? Great. Did I hear you say great?
I'm hoping that my report is brief and a lot more mundane than um, the Kings.
So I'll be very brief. Good morning, commissioners. Um, the background process is going as planned and as scheduled. Um, I think we're with, if all goes well, based on what I know today, and if all continues as scheduled, that, that process should be wrapped up by the end of this month. Um, then we'll have to, if that is successful, finalize the employment agreement or the uh, conditions of hire. If all is successful and we're able to uh, continue to move forward like we are, I anticipate uh, the new jail administrator would start um, early to mid-November. So again, still things that have to happen, but so far nothing is, has changed that or um, caused me concern that we're not on a path to, to, to finalize that. So.
So if that timeframe sticks, then does it, it still make sense then for us to do the supplemental budget? Moving all the funds and doing all the creation and everything, right?
Um, short answer is probably yes, but I'll defer to, to Jen and Heather uh, on, on the.
Timing.
Yeah, I think so. I'm, yeah, but again, maybe things that I'm not aware of. Um, so that's all I have today. I have received from Commissioner Christopher and thank you, um, recommendations for the coroner's interview. So uh, I don't think I've received them from, from, um,
I'll get them.
But I, I, I may have missed them and then we probably wanna get something scheduled and move forward with, uh, once we've got the three. I've combined the list for the preference of interviews.
I need to.
And I, we have received one or two more. I'll send those to you. So.
Isn't it interesting how many job applications we're getting now? A year ago, two years ago.
Yeah.
Any job, you didn't get any.
And it's kind of a sign of the times. I mean, I think we're seeing a lot more applications for uh, positions that in the past we would have got virtually none. So that's correct. And then we're probably gonna need to reach out. I have absolutely no idea what to ask a coroner in an interview. So I will poll my fellow HR professionals to see uh, since most counties that I've looked at or talked to, the coroner was an elected position. Um, I'll see if they've done deputy coroner interviews, um, which probably be similar questions. So if you have any sources of where we might get um, or questions you may want to ask, um, more importantly, then you can start sending those to me as well. We can start putting that together. Um, and then the interview process, you have to be determined, um, as well as the timing, but so.
I have two um, questions for you that I wanna have offline.
Okay.
Um, so I need to go back in and find your I'm looking at coroner application number fifteen, but I can't find the email off the top of my head for the one that contained all the personal.
Okay. Okay.
Sir, did you get, I had to step out. Did you say when you were hoping to start the interviews?
I said that I'm waiting to get uh, from all three of you, your preferred um, interviews and then I'll combine those into a, a list of uh, um, folks that we can interview. Um, and then we need to work on getting the questions as well as uh, the process itself for the interviews and, and um, we need, so that's where we're at. So.
Must, I thought I'd sent mine to you.
And I'll go back and look. You may have, I, I don't recall anything and I'll go back and search. Um, but i- if you did, thank you. I, I may have missed it. So.
Has anybody been following the Yakima coroner?
Yeah, I read the headlines yesterday.
No, I haven't seen the Yakimaharo.
We can send them to.
So that's it for me?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. So we are going to move to executive session with prosecuting attorney David Cannell. Pending issues update with some information that may qualify for executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two point three oh point one one oh one, print one, print I to discuss threatening and pending litigation. Um, and we will be, how long? Fifteen minutes? How, how much time would you like to? We'll, we'll resume at eleven thirty.
Are we coming back for open or are we going to lunch afterwards?
We have uh, new business unfinished or forward pending. Is there any issues?
I don't have anything.
I wanted to thank you. Um, I would like to add at one PM, the discussion with the treasurer and the assessor with regards to um, sales tax.
We'll be returning at one PM after our executive session.
Yes.
And you have them scheduled to come.
Yeah, I did. Just what I've been working on, emails back and forth. So I'd like to, if you'd like, I can formally add that as a motion to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to put on the agenda at one, one o'clock, the treasurer and assessor for a sales task, sales tax discussion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
I, motion passes. So we.